I'd like to call the order tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, April 17, 2024, here in the boardroom. Do we have a roll call, please, Tammy?
Nubs Ashburn.
Here.
Brett Waller.
Here.
Linda Yingling.
Here.
Paul Prue.
Here.
Chad Krieger.
Here.
Kendra Osnes.
Here.
Ron Lipperty.
Here.
Jaclyn Cromwell.
Here.
Kevin Blake.
Here. Will you please join me as you're able to listen to the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Lord, the Lord Jesus Christ and the Lord of all.
Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Area Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Max respects the role that our elected board members serve in the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students with the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event; a professional conduct is a celebration for all attendants. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. We do have one item for, one person turned in for public comment. This is time that the board allows up to fifteen minutes at the beginning of each regular meeting, the public comment that's important to hear, the concerns of its constituents. Without further ado, Linda Yingling is asked to speak publicly.
Okay, here we go. It's kind of a different spot than what I'm normally used to sit in. Where do I start? So, ten years on this board, I served almost eleven. Many ups and downs, along with lots of hours spent. Sometimes it's just not a second home. Served on many committees throughout my time, and enjoyed all of them, but finally at the early childhood in Head Start. The selected position is often known as a faithless job. To me, it was giving back to my community, where I live and where I went to school myself. I wanted to make a difference, and I believe I did that. In the last couple months, I've been dealing with some personal and medical issues, excuse me, that have made it hard for me to attend the meetings I can watch. I'm exhausted, and the fight we need to fight, the good fight to make changes in the school district, is almost burnt out. With that being said, today, April 17, 2024, will be my last roll call vote. After ten years of service, I will be resigning from the Merrill Area Public School effective immediately. But first, I owe some thank yous. First, to the community that voted for me all these years. It's been my pleasure to be your voice and the support system here in this boardroom. All the support and wonderful comments I've received have been very heartwarming. Next, to our administrators and teachers who have allowed me to come into their classrooms and buildings. I will miss that the most, watching those kids in that room, that's pretty cool. And the teachers, and everything that we have going for us. Lastly, to my fellow board members, remember who you work for. The people of the community rely on you to do the right thing. The voters, who are making decisions for our school district to be honest and fair. Don't liar tight things. It will get you much further, and it's okay to leave with your heart. I'll leave you with a quote, "The success of a school board lies in its ability to listen to the needs of the community and act in the best interest of the students." Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next on our agenda this evening, not having any other forms for public comments, correct, Tammy? All right. Next, we do have some recognition from the school board. I'd like to start off by recognizing Sophie Kaler for being voted to be treasurer for the Skills USA State Executive Board. That's quite the accomplishment, and I believe her advisor, Jordan Pretz, is here as well. So, we'll recognize Sophie, and then I'll put Jordan on the spot to talk a little bit about what this all means to the organization and to Sophie. (applause) Tell us a little bit about your role as state officer.
So, as treasurer, I'll be helping the local chapters with their budget, making sure that everyone knows how much money they can spend, and just helping anyone and anywhere they need it.
Jordan, elaborate a little bit more.
Yeah, so Sophie has demonstrated just an awesome mentality with Skills USA, being a leader in the classroom and in the club. Nominations went out, or I guess an email went out looking for new state officers. I thought Sophie would be great at that, so we kind of got the ball rolling, and she put on an awesome campaign down at State in Madison, and obviously won all of the votes. So, she did a very good job speaking and being there on behalf of Merrill.
Excellent. Very proud. Congratulations. Thank you.
Can I get a picture with you?
Sophie, can I ask how often do you have to travel with officer team to different places?
Um, as of right now, there's only six officers that I have to travel with, so that's like six to, I think it's twelve days out of the year, and about five of those are during summer.
Great.
Well, and also being, should have said this too, being a newly elected officer, she's invited down to Nationals in Atlanta, Georgia. So, that'll be another thing that we're, can we come to that, do you?
Yes.[373.13][373.13](laughter)
Thank you. Congratulations.[376.13][376.13](applause) We do have additional recognition. I know that's pretty tough to beat with, but we certainly found a way. We have Ms. Emily Bonak with us this evening, receiving her Cole Fellowship Award. How awesome to explain a little bit more about that instead of putting Tricia on the spot, I'll put Shannon on the spot.
So, Mrs. Bonak is an awesome teacher at Merrill High School. This is a really big deal. This award is a huge deal, so this goes to the best of the best teachers in the state of Wisconsin here. And I believe it's six thousand to you, it's six thousand to the school, which is awesome and incredible, but it really is a tribute to Mrs. Bonak and her teaching. She needs to be nominated for this, and it's a pretty rigorous process with letters and all these kind of things, the recommendation, and then to be selected is really an honor. And I think the last, I think the last Cole Fellow we had here may have been Joe Tabor years ago, and so it doesn't happen very frequently, and so this is a big deal. And I'll just say that Mrs. Bonak, she teaches our most challenging kids and our best kids on the same day, and delivers for those students equally, and I'm just really proud of her. I'm just delighted that she's on her staff, and she's awesome, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I think she got a good angle.
(laughter)
Well, I mean, you caught me in my mom outfit, right? I wear a lot of hats, right? So, you know, I taught all day, and then I went to four-year-old dance class, and then I meal prepped, and then I'm gonna go run and go home and make dinner. So, I apologize, this isn't like my professional outfits, but you know, you're not a Cole Fellow because you're lazy, so. (laughter) Sure.
Your husband told me to give you a hard time. Go home and tell him I gave you a hard time.
Okay. He gives me a hard time on his own, but thank you, appreciate that.
All right.
See you, Kendra.
See you.
Next, we do have some additional recognition at this point. We'd like to recognize our outgoing board members and welcome in the new. So, first, I'd like to recognize Chad Krieger and Kendra Osnes for their service to the school district. Chad's been a one-term board member for three years. Kendra has joined us four years ago through the process, and two years has been clerk for us and improved that process along the way. Just gonna surprise you and try to do my hair up like yours, but I chose it was easier to be like Chad today.[543.16][543.16](laughter) But certainly want to thank you both, bringing your honest opinions to the table, all the stuff you shared, both at committees and the meetings of the whole. Really do appreciate that, and just so you both definitely make a difference, and thank you for your service. So.[565.16][565.16](applause)
Yeah, I just like that, I appreciate the service that you guys have done for the Merrill Area Public Schools, and I think you both served on the board to recognize us, honor our schools and our students to have the best effort to provide for them, so I know you're both really active in the community, and just really grateful for all that you've done. Really good questions, challenged issues, allowed for really good discussions and debates, and hired me, so I thank you.
Right?
(inaudible).
That was a good chat.
Thank you.
At the same time, what are we doing?
Yeah, let's do that, so we have Tammy do one.
Okay.
You wanna be in the middle?
No.
Wanna be the rose between the two thorns?
No.
That would be that, right?
I won't ask any questions.
We'll save that for later.
Save that for later.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Chair dance.
(laughter)
So, with that being said, we did have an election recently, and we do have two new board members along with Brett's reelection. We do have Amber Gerizzo and Mike Cornish, who will take office on April 22. Amber is with us tonight and serving double duty. She's gonna be on her way to Marathon, wasbe scheduled there, new board member gathering this evening, so I thought she would come here to say hi and introduce herself here quickly, or we'd introduce her. Mike is unable to join us tonight. He ended up in the hospital the other night, having his gallbladder removed, so fortunately, it's gallbladder and nothing else that was causing it, but needless to say, he'll be back with us shortly, as we wish him a speedy recovery. So, welcome, both Amber and Mike.[672.13][672.13](applause) Without further ado, our two dancing with chairs stars over here, our student board reps, Brooke Rude and Max Black.
Hi, guys. Our spring sports have been off to an amazing start this year. Our golf team had a meet yesterday, and if you saw on Facebook, they were very, very well. Jake Schmelzer got second place, only losing by one stroke. I don't really know golf terms, so take it as you will. Our track team has had many PRs this season, and their first outdoor meet will be tomorrow. Our baseball and softball teams are also off to a great start, despite the rain. And our middle school and high school students have been working hard to put the new director to use using the Matilda play, or I think it's a musical. This show will take place the weekend of April 25 through the 27th. Tickets for the show are available for purchase online via QR codes or at the door as well. We are also excited to see what our theater program has put together for us again next year. Last week, our annual great speaker came to speak with us. This year, it was Cam Awesome. He told us a story about how he overcame difficulties while maintaining a championship mindset. He had a great turnout of students as well as the community with an overwhelmingly positive response. We are so thankful to have this opportunity every year for an outside speaker to come and speak to our students and community. And in two weeks, our seniors are able to pick up their capping gowns as we prepare for the next month full of graduation preparation. It's a bittersweet moment for all of us.
And then coming up at the end of this month is Raise Your Voice's big annual event, the Mental Health Awareness Walk. So, all year, the officers have been working to organize this activity and to get the word out. So, this Friday, members are gonna go down to paint windows on Main Street, and then next week, some will be on the radio station, WJMT, to promote it. And tomorrow, a career fair is being held at the Field House for the entire school to attend. This is gonna consist of both businesses and universities, mostly from the local area, who will each have a booth. A total of fifty-seven booths covers a huge variety of interests, so it should be a great way for students to explore different career options and introduce scholarships and promote youth apprenticeship. And then DECA members are able to participate in mini-business roles on Friday, so they're gonna travel to Church Mutual and listen to some speakers present on business. We're gonna be divided. Each group will create their own mini-business and prototype. So, once my group wins the competition, we're gonna hear from some more speakers and then head home with some great insights into the world of business.
I'd like you to judge.[830.13][830.13](laughter)
You're in trouble.
Who am I right next to?
I was gonna say, so you said the speaker was Cam Awesome, so we have Max Confident?
Yeah. That's actually his legal last name, and I learned that, and I was like...
Well, he did say for $179 or...
I know. You can change your last name.
$200. You can change your last name back when he did that, but I was just thinking...
And it was hard to talk to him and not say like, "This is awesome," because then like everybody was laughing, and it'd just be so awkward unless you would...
At least you don't even get a punch, right?
Yes.
So, not in front of the whole group.
Yes. Oh, gosh, that's so embarrassing.
You did a great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Certainly made me wonder what you would change your last name to, given the opportunity. Like I said, Max, I'm pretty sure it was Confident.
Yeah.
I'll let you think on that report back some other time, right?
Yes, next week. Or next week, next month.
Yeah, give it to us next month?
Yes.
Any questions from other board members to our board reps, as well as for Max? Otherwise, thank you for the updates, do appreciate that. We always enjoy hearing from you and what's going on at the high school. Next, we have administrative reports. I'll turn it over to Shannon. As you're aware, the board members can ask questions in advance, so clarify those questions here if they would like, but I will turn it over to Shannon to go through our list of administrative reports.
Thank you. The first administrative report tonight is the Director of Curriculum and Instruction Report, focusing on the school force overnight attendance at the CNI community meeting last week. Essentially, the exploration here is two things. One is moving the overnight stay from the fifth grade to the sixth grade year, and then rethinking how, or exploring how we are staffing those overniners moving forward. So, she did a really nice job presenting that report. Any comments or questions on that? Next up is the Director of People's Services, a special ed report. I have Lewis School's here this evening. That report focuses on the Northern Human Center. That was also presented at CTP last week, talking about enrollment numbers and funding and some of those kind of things, and the future of that program, so if she was here, if anybody has any questions. Next is the Pine River School for Young Learners Monthly Report, talking about enrollment numbers, health screenings, and those kind of things. Mr. Martinovich is here, if anybody has any questions for enrollment numbers. The Food Service Report is item D, that focuses primarily on participation for the month of March. If anybody has any questions or comments, I think Florida goes on tomorrow. The Director of Business Services Report is item E, Budget Meetings, Enrollment Projections and Staffing Decisions, posting some other information in there. That topic summary sheet is attached, and Dr. Strike is here, if anybody has any questions about that report. And then finally, item F, the Superintendent's Report. There's two things that are uploaded in there. First is this Friday, we're having some folks in the community get together to talk about the possibility to explore a community education program where courses are offered to adults in the evenings using our facilities as a way to kind of get people into our schools and kind of bridge that connection between the school and the community, and so we're just starting that conversation this Friday to see if there's interest in that. That is a notion or a concept that's taken off in other places, most notably recently in Towne Lock and Land Manager, and so we're gonna start that discussion here and see if that's a fit for us. And then secondly, also on Friday, I have a meeting with a couple of local districts about recruiting teachers to rural districts in the north. So, that'll be an interesting discussion with a couple of local districts and some reps from CSETTAP, so that's, that's taking place Friday as well. Any questions on that? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Shannon. Next on our agenda is committee reports. We'll start with the Finance Human Resources Committee. That's for the board members, we're draft minutes from the March 13 committee meeting. Ron Ebbs, the committee chair, and other members of the Finance HR Committee are available for questions. Any board members have questions for our Finance Human Resources Committee? Any questions for Finance or HR Committee? Otherwise, we'll move on to the Curriculum Technology People's Services Committee, CTP, as we abbreviate that. The draft minutes were attached from the March 13 meeting. Paul Prue as the committee chair is available, along with other committee members from CTP. Any questions from board members for our CTP committee? Any questions in regards to our CTP committee? Hearing none, we'll move on. The agenda next is unfinished business. We do not have anything categorized as such, so we'll move to Board of Education business. First item on that portion of the agenda is the 2024 Summer Academy Program. Couple topic summary sheets, one prepared from Ally Libby, as well as Brett Potter. There is a recommended motion from our CTP committee. Is anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda topic? Paul?
Move to approve the schedules, course offerings, and registration materials for Mass Summer School Enrichment 2024.
I'll second. Motion by Paul, we have a second by Ron. Any discussion or questions on the motion or topic? Any highlights that Shannon or Ally would like to make?
No. Mr. Potter did a nice job presenting at CTP, talking about the courses, primarily remediation at high school, and I'm sorry, I think it was covered through all of them.
I would agree. Any other questions or discussion on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the Elementary Student Handbook for 2024-2025. That topic summary sheet was submitted by Amanda Patterson, Megan Galtzer, and Heather Silver. The CTP committee has a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make that motion? Ron?
Motion to approve the 2024-2025 Elementary Student Handbook. Second.
Motion by Ron, we have a second by Brett. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the High School Student Handbook Planner for 2024-2025. The topic summary sheet was provided by Tricia Dedrick. Recommended motion was provided from our CTP committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Jaclyn?
Move to approve the 2024-2025 High School Student Handbook.
Second.
Motion by Jaclyn, a second by Brett. Any board members have any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Elementary Student Handbook for 2024-2025. That topic summary sheet was submitted by Amanda Patterson, Megan Galtzer, and Heather Silver. The CTP committee has a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make that motion? Ron?
Motion to approve the 2024-2025 Elementary Student Handbook. Second.
Motion by Ron, we have a second by Brett. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Prairie River Middle School Course Descriptions for 2024-2025. Attached was a topic summary sheet by Cassie Scholes, and a recommended motion from our CTP committee. Do we have a motion on this topic tonight? Nubs?
I'm going to approve the 2024-2025 Course Description for Prairie River Middle School.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second? A second by Kendra. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the High School Student Handbook Planner for 2024-2025. The topic summary sheet was provided by Tricia Dedrick. Recommended motion was provided from our CTP committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Jaclyn?
Move to approve the 2024-2025 High School Student Handbook.
Second.
Motion by Jaclyn, a second by Brett. Any board members have any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Approval of Head Start Training and Technical Assistance Plan for 2024-2025. That topic summary sheet was provided by Ryan Martinovich, and it comes with a recommended motion. Do we have anyone willing to make a motion on this topic tonight? Paul?
Move to approve the Head Start 2024-2025 Training and Technical Assistance Plan.
I'll second.
Motion by Paul, we have a second by Ron. Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is Coach Positions for Social Emotional Learning, or SEL curriculum. Attached is a topic summary sheet from Amber Aluska, and a recommended motion from both our CTP and Finance Human Resources Committees. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the SEL Coach Positions, as presented.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second? A second by Jaclyn. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the Food Service Contract Addendum. Topic summary sheet was provided by Dr. Kelly Strike, and there's a recommended motion by our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item? Nubs?
I move to approve of the 2024-2025 fiscal year addendum of the Taylor Food Service Contract as presented.
Got a motion by Nubs, do we have a second? A second by Paul in regards to the addendum for the Todd Food Service Contract as presented. Any questions or discussion on that motion or topic? Any questions or discussion on that motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the Decorable Classroom Library Books Purchase. Topic summary sheet was provided by Amanda Patterson. There is a recommended motion from our Finance HR Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item? Jaclyn?
I move to approve the purchase order for LaCria Education, operated for $10,889.10 for decorable classroom library books.
Motion by Jaclyn, do we have a second? A second by Kendra. Any discussion or question on this motion or topic? Any discussion or question on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda this evening is some new playgrounds. Attached is a topic summary sheet from Dr. Strike, recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Ron?
Motion to approve the proposal for re-recreation of playgrounds at Kate Goodrich and Washington Elementary, with the principals making final equipment and propose, proposal selections.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second? A second by Nubs. Any discussion or questions in regards to this topic or the motion? Kendra?
I just want to recognize, this is already pre-planned. This isn't right, like, I know we talked about it, I just want to call it out here.
And it's esoteric.
Yep, esoteric, yes, okay. Just want to call it out for everyone.
Thank you. Any additional questions or discussion points on this motion or this agenda item? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any one opposed, say nay. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the CISA IX Shared Service Contract Addendum. Topic summary sheet was brought forward by Amanda Patterson, and the Finance Human Resources Committee has a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Nobs?
I vote to approve the amended CISA IX contract, including additional 1.5% of the CISA side.
Motion by Nobs, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Chad. Sorry, first sorry, Ron. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the Updated Facilities Project. That topic summary sheet was presented by Dr. Kelly Strike at our Finance Human Resources Committee, which brought forward a recommended motion. Do we have a motion on this agenda item this evening? Paul?
I move approval of the facilities project as presented.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ron. Any questions or discussions in regards to this agenda item or that motion? Anything you'd like to highlight on there, Shannon? All pretty self-explanatory, and we've gone through them, but...
Yeah, I just appreciate the work that Dr. Strike has done to get this up to here. So, thank you.
Any questions or discussion in regards to that topic or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is the Health Insurance for 2024-2025. Topic summary sheet was provided by Dr. Strike, and a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Any board member willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Ron?
Motion to approve the renewal of the health insurance for the spire's health plan with a 9.5% increase as presented for fiscal year 2025.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second? Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions in regard to this topic or this motion? Chad?
Is that a pretty big hike?
Well, it was the last two years, nothing, right? Uh, well, then it doesn't matter. So, was it a negative 1.9 and then a 1?
Negative 1, positive 1.9.
Okay. So, that's reflective of loss ratios, loss claims ratios that we're experiencing. That's a big jump for us, certainly the last three years. That's a pretty reasonable increase compared to what's going on.
I guess for me, being out here for a year, that's looked like a big number.
Yeah, we've had two really good years.
Can you also explain how that process worked? Because that wasn't the first number they brought forward. When we were in the committee meeting, it was explained by Dr. Strike. That first number came in 13 and a half, almost 14?
13.1.
Okay, 13.1, and that accomplished...
Negotiated at 13.5.
So, by having that power of being together with that, it does... Although that number 9.5 does seem like a lot, if we didn't have that behind us, it would have been even higher. So, certainly some things working for us there.
Average is over what, over three years?
3.5.
3.5 something.
3.5 something, yeah. The other thing is we did a staff survey as well, indicating because of 13.1, it's kind of a high, and a majority of staff said they want to keep the plan the same and absorb the increase. Because they did throw adoptions of deductible or prescription plan. We explored that anyway, but to reduce, we got to increase our deductible by 500 would reduce that premium increase by very little, and most people would absorb that full $500. You know, the savings that you get on that did not make up for it. People paying $500 for a deductible is quite a thing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any additional questions on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
I will abstain.
Motion carries with the noted abstention. Next item on our agenda is Dental Insurance for 2024-2025. Dr. Strike also provided that topic summary sheet, and there is a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic tonight? Jaclyn?
I move to approve the renewal of the dental insurance for fiscal year 25 with reduced monthly rate deduction rate as presented, employee deduction portion absorbing the decrease.
Motion by Jaclyn, we have a second. Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
I will abstain.
Carries. Next item on our agenda is Voluntary Benefits. That topic summary sheet was provided by Dr. Strike, and there is a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make that motion or a motion this evening on this agenda topic? Paul?
I move approval of the renewals for voluntary benefits as presented.
Motion by Paul, we have a second by Ron. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic this evening? Any highlights on that, Shannon? These voluntary benefits are all out of pocket by...
All voids, correct?
Any additional discussion or questions in regards to the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
I will abstain.
Motion carries with the noted abstention. Next item on our agenda is a revision to the Teacher Comp Plan. Attached, topic summary sheet provided by Dr. Strike, and a recommended motion from the Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item tonight? Ron?
Motion to approve the additional step to the teacher compensation plan.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second? Second by Nobs. Any discussion or questions in regard to this agenda item and motion?
We've gotten to the point where you got to relook at it and max it out, so I would keep adding steps.
Well, so this was approved last month, redone, and then rediscovered that there was someone that was opting. So, we added that step to it, put that person in there, so it's fine.
So, is that just the plan, is this if somebody steps up and they're out, and we just add that?
Well, we have a percentage increase built in moving forward. We likely will revisit this every four years.
Any additional discussion or questions on the motion or topic? Any additional discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the CTE Coordinator Position. Topic summary provided by Dr. Strike. Recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Jaclyn?
I'm motion for the approval of a stipend for CTE Coordinator.
Motion by Jaclyn, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda tonight is the Administrator Professional Staff Compensation Plan. Topic summary sheet was provided by Dr. Strike and Dr. Murray. Recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item tonight? Ron?
Motion to approve the Administrator Professional Staff Compensation Plan, issued contracts for 24-25, and provided 3% increase to staff not applying.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Do we have any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic?
This is a support staff to the... There's no clear right time for this question.
Any question, thank you. Any additional questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is Support Staff Reduction. Attached is a topic summary sheet from Dr. Strike. There is a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item? Paul?
Move to eliminate the active school program coordinator support staff position held by Peyton Levenowski at the conclusion of 2023-2024 School Year Grant.
Motion by Paul, we have a second. Second by Ron. Just a little reminder on that, Shannon.
Yeah, this is a grant-funded program that's been in place for a number of years, and the grant has expired. And so, no grant, no position. And so, we've had the discussions with Peyton, and she's very well aware of this. Because it's the elimination of the position, it's more important.
Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic?
Kendra? So, are we not applying for the grant again, or does it expire after a certain period that you cannot apply for it?
Kelly, or Maggie, any thoughts on that?
I don't know about the grant portion, but we are in... I'm having discussions with Boys and Girls Club to have an offering for our students at their school.
That's where I was going, okay.
So, I've met with Boys and Girls Club to look at what that could look like next year, because it's a really valuable option for families to have in our community, and we'd like to see something continue.
And they have it at the middle school, so it makes sense.
And Boys and Girls Clubs can apply for the same grant.
Okay.
Just, you know, the same pattern, who would be able to...
And I was just curious, because I didn't know if, like, I know my daughter had participated for a while, and I didn't know if there was a decline, if that's why, or if it was just a bit of Boys and Girls, another alternative.
They are just on a cycle, but Boys and Girls Clubs can apply too.
Which, wouldn't that be K through four then too, or just three, four?
Oh, my discussions have been just a three, four increase in the Boys and Girls Club participation. And just to kind of plug them, their options are quite expansive, including summer and holiday options to be bussed to Wassa, which is really quite cool for our kids to participate. They have an excellent facility.
They do.
It's a really robust program.
How would people in the community know that, like, if they're not familiar with Boys and Schools, sorry, I know this is maybe your realm, but how would they, like, is there information that's sent out, like, via Skyward?
Yeah, we'll be pushing out a lot of information once we get that kind of figured out, what that needs to look like next year.
Thank you, thank you.
They want numbers to increase as well, so we'll both try.
Yes, great, thank you.
Thanks, Kendra, thank you, Megan. Chad, did that cover your question, or do you...
No, that covered it.
All right. Any additional questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Referendum Information Recap and Next Steps. This is a discussion-only portion of our agenda, and I will turn it over to Shannon.
Thanks. I just wanted to kind of start having a preliminary discussion about how to proceed. Obviously, our referendum failed on April 2nd of this year, which disappointed many of us. And so, as we determine how to spend our energies moving forward, I just wanted to bring some thoughts and learn on some preliminary thoughts. We obviously have a lot of time before we do anything else. I think we're up for discussion.
Nobs, then Ron. If I think we're going to move forward, we should kind of take small steps instead of doing this big chunk that we were going to do at one time. I think that was too much for a community. I think if we need to pass something, we should actually one thing at a time. In smaller amounts of money. Just my opinion.
Additional input, Ron?
My thinking is that somehow we're not getting there. And I think we have to backtrack and look, starting from the very beginning. The cards we set out, the information we pour out, I don't know what that would look like, first of all, and I think we got to go either from a different production. Rather than do the same school solutions again, it's three in a row.
School perception there.
School perception, I'm sorry. That's my thinking.
All right. Paul, I saw your hand up as well.
Yeah, just tagging on with Ron's, we need a different approach in the program. And one thing that happened this year is we started out, I mean, last summer, we were going to River Guns, and I waited all along through that time period to see these letters of support, or community letters of support, and they never appeared. And I talked to a couple of those people, and they said, yeah, it kind of slipped to mind, so we need to concentrate on things like that and get that going. I think the fall is going to be a good time to do it. There's going to be a lot of interest in this fall, and I think you're going to get, you'll get more voters out, and I think you'll get people out that'll vote more favorably in referendum. But also, that's school perceptions, that... They told us three times you're going to win, we didn't come close yet. So, that's, those are my thoughts. Don't be above the ship, you've done a good job so far. Chad, just to be honest.
Yeah, and that's fair, but we did have the tax bill did come out in the middle of that poll survey, and there was a lot of press on that one way or the other, right? Most of it wasn't exciting as far as wanting to put more money into any other cause.
And then we had people from the county board that find pressure.
Right.
I mean, that's, I think, I think pine pressure is more than the taxes, just from what I hear in the community. They didn't want to, they didn't want to support ours, and then have to come back and support pine pressure.
There were a lot of unknowns at that time. The one known was the fact that property taxes were going up in many areas, and there are some reassessments going on that we'll have to keep our eyes on in the next year here, because that news will come out, although after November, it will come out again. Chad, did I see your hand up as well?
Yeah, I just, to go back when we originally started this conversation, we thought that the referendum, if the referendum failed, we were looking at selling Jefferson, if the community didn't want to keep it. And it's, again, it's, we're talking again, now we're going to go on another year of it being empty. There was talk about doing it in sections. I asked that question, I was told we could not do it in sections, we couldn't afford it. Because I was wanting not to go to referendum, I thought we should try to go in, and we're going to do it in sections, I can't, you can't keep asking for money and then somehow still keep doing things. Stay up, stay at your course after you ask money. Well, how come we ask for money? And then, and you know, it's hard with, I know payroll's a little different, you know, but, you know, we kind of got away with the new taxes and stuff, that we could keep more people than we thought we were going to. But with this, I mean, you looked at, we looked at, you know, okay, we're going to, we want this money to move in here, now we didn't get it, now we're still talking, we're still going to try pushing in there. To me, it's going to be hard to ever pass a referendum if you keep going that way. There's somewhere, there's got to be a, okay, we can get it, now we got to go to this way. We didn't get the money, we got to sell it. And I think that's, honestly, I think that's the next step this board really should look at, is selling Jefferson. And I think that, honestly, I think that's the next step this board really should look at is selling Jefferson. I mean, for, I think it's one on five years, we have the, a long time for building, to the point where the building's not gonna be any good. If we keep staying empty.
Additional discussion, thank you Chad. Kendra?
So, I think that, you know, during the canvassing, right, there was four out of all of the townships in the city that actually passed. As I look at the numbers, those are the only ones, there was four of them, I think, if I'm right, out of all of them that passed. So, it's interesting as to like, what's the demographic and why are those passing and the other ones aren't? Like, if you really, I don't know how deep in the data we can go, but that's where mine was going, is what's in those demographic areas that people are supportive of this and what are the other areas that people are not? So, maybe diving into what that is, is an idea, right, to just see. But I feel like Shannon, like honestly, like you have covered every avenue of press that I can even think of. So, if you're gonna talk about what else can we do from your awareness standpoint, I don't know. I don't have a solution for that because I think phenomenally, like, you've done a great job. I think that people in the community, like, I must mean that people here, I think everybody supported and tried to spread the word. I just think that there's a lot of things that happened that just prevented it from being there. I don't know what the solution is, but I do really feel like the answer's gonna be and where it failed. And how do you find out, like, who can you talk to in those areas? That's...
You and I went to your township, how did that do?
Lost miserably, my neighbors.
Just out of curiosity, how about Towne Merrill?
Yeah, we have the breakdown. We essentially won the city, the boards carried the city.
Yeah, but District Seven, I think, had, it won, I can't remember, I can't remember off the top of my head, but there was four that I know that the numbers were.
I just wanted to tell them, how big a, how big a bite you had here?
I can tell you.
Thank you.
Towne Merrill was, the yeses were three eighty-three, the no's were four fifty-one.
Well, that's not a big number. So, there's your worries about taxes from the township that got hit the worst this year. We still lost it, it wasn't the numbers I would've expected to respond to.
Here's an observation from my advantage point, so we've lost three in a row all by the same percentages. Two, asked two different questions. I am not confident we're in a position where we can pass much of anything. Just because to Kendra's point, we've taken different approaches. School perceptions works, you know, and we had the tax thing pop up in the middle. We had some other things pop up that didn't help. Nothing's gonna change, nothing's gonna change between now and the future. You know, the people will still be saying we need high taxes, which is fair, you know, taxes are low. If we waited longer than that, the taxes will come down, which no one will recognize or appreciate or value. You know, and we'd be talking about, we're gonna raise your taxes again. You know, we tried that last time, and that obviously led us by a minute, so. My personal recommendation, and I serve at the pleasure of the board and I'm not afraid to do the work, but I don't think a referendum's in our future in the near term. That's just me. Now, considering Chad's point about selling Jefferson or, you know, what do we do moving on? If we were to move on with the plan, the plan is still the best plan. I mean, obviously, I think we all ran that and a lot of work went into that plan. If we were to go with that plan, that would take us years, you know, because we can't, we can't afford sixty-nine dollars. I would maybe task Nick and some of his guys to start figuring out what it would cost to get Pine River Operations into Jefferson on a Toyota budget instead of a Cadillac budget, which is maybe where we're gonna pitch them. And at least have that information and if that's feasible, we consider doing that. Maybe three years later, we look at doing the same with NAC. You know, once you sell Pine River and get some revenue or however that goes. So, my recommendation would be at least to explore proceedings something. We can't afford to keep sticking money in a NAC of this building or whatever. Maybe it's better selling Jefferson than, I don't know, this goes. But, I mean, the plan was the right plan, we all got there together with the community. And so, that is the plan whether or not, we just want to take the time and know that our Jefferson.
You know, we sold Scott School for Little and Nothing, Midway went for Little and Nothing. What's Jefferson gonna settle for? I mean, I don't see it as a real viable option, sell it. With all those apartments being built, somebody gonna put apartments in there? No. And it's not, it's not good for a business, for any kind of business in there. It's just not been figured the right way, right in front of school.
Yeah, I think, not to speak to Chad, I think the point of selling would not necessarily be the revenue, but to do it off our parks.
And you're looking at a city lot compared to a, you're looking at a huge city lot compared to a township, you know, a country lot, which a city lot is worth a lot more. So, you're comparing apples and oranges in a way.
Yeah, who's gonna be interested with the tax schedule it is? Who's gonna wanna buy, what was that, fourteen acres or ten acres?
Sixteen.
Fifteen acres. Who's gonna buy fifteen acres in town and have no development?
City's trying to put all those houses over here by Church Mutual. That was on smaller lots yet. I'm just saying, you're holding on to something that's been empty for a long time.
I'd rather see Pine River go than Jefferson.
I asked that question, I was told we're gonna do it, or a referendum, so, I don't know. I asked many times, I asked to separate it out and I got told no, so. And I was, I didn't know I had my hand raised before, but Shannon, you did everything I think possible. I think, the worst thing is, when we all talked, it's, even with our meetings that we held, it was always the same people. You know, that's the bad thing. And I've said it before and I've said it all the quarter here, and Ron did not want to be informed. And that's part of this, otherwise we'd get more people at this.
Yeah, and I think we're kind of, the Scott thing, the Midway thing, those things linger, you know, and so, at best, one thing that we've discovered by going to the townships, at best, we're disconnected from the people in the townships. If they don't have kids in school, they don't have a table in school. That's an observation. So, I think that some of those things, I think, you know, some of those things would be hard for us to shake, certainly in the short term. As far as a successful referendum. The fact that we've asked two different questions three times and then resulted the same with our percentage every time? That's pretty telling to me, I don't know. And you guys came out to the townships and we did all the community things and we served it all out there. And actually, to be honest, and I'm gonna venture a little bit, this referendum was the biggest no-brainer in the state of Wisconsin anymore. No debt, low revenue ceiling limit, lowest mill rate around, cheap projects, save us money, that's the best we can do. And I respect that, that's democracy, but we can't offer them a better referendum that people could be, that was the good one, so. And you have some reservations that other places around us are passing theirs and that those, that means lost opportunities for our kids. If Point is passing a fourteen million dollar operations recurring referendum, Point kids have better opportunities than our kids do. There's no way around that. And that's alarming. I don't know how we get over it, I don't know if we can get over it as far as the referendum is concerned. We had a gentleman, whenever at a town meeting, said, "I will never vote for a referendum regardless of what it is." How do you overcome that? You know, I'm not a grand, that's one person though. I did an email last night from a person saying, "Here's the things you should have considered on this referendum." We've talked about every one of those for six months. And it's like, how do you help that person? This is a person that's informed, I would consider informed. So, as far as the referendum is concerned, I think we should skip that for a while. Not that we have to decide what to do with Jefferson tonight, or Pine River, or how to proceed, but I'm just looking for some direction, should we get some, get some numbers? Should we start looking at what Nick, kind of Magic Nick can work, get us in there for free?
Shannon, just one thing, I think you really should be thinking about budgeting for a Fund Forty-six transfer every year. And that means if you remember Fund Forty-six of your capital improvement projects, you have it in your plan. And really think about that for long-term capital improvement. And I don't wanna be doom and gloom, but to Shannon's point, like, we're probably fine for a few years, but roofs, boilers, things like that, costs a lot of money that we're not gonna be able to come up with that kind of cash in a year. And so, I think you have to think a little bit operationally and think about, we wanna put money into that Fund Forty-six each year. And so, whether that's to help you get prison kids over to Jefferson or take care of a boiler that's gonna have to be taken care of over here at the high school and roof replacement, that you're starting to build that. With no debt, like, we've lost our tools to stabilize your mill rate, but I think that's something we need to think about. Those are conscious decisions we have to make about our operational budget too, that we wanna put X amount away. I can put that on a future HR finance committee discussion, but I just want you to kind of think about that a little bit in terms of like that long-term vision, funding in terms of capital improvement for that.
Have we windled that quite a bit, maybe?
Uh, well, what is it, one and a half, something like that, one point six?
I would say we're probably right around one point three, one point four as it stands today.
But then there's like, for the football field, that's, that's what it was started for, correct?
Yeah, I think last time we talked about the football field was basically three fifty, plus the 350, I think. Quite a bit cheaper than, because we're not doing a site prep, we're not wanting to do a lot on the middle. Fields are three fifty, that's a number.
I just think that needs to be kind of like, you know, regrouped. I think you have to decide that too, but just be thinking about that for more than capital.
Yeah, and I think to Kelly's point, and she's said, I mean, we're gonna be spending money somewhere on capital or on facilities projects, whether it's Jefferson or Pine River or that or here, we're gonna be spending the money on this stuff. So, it's like, we might as well start just treating that as a budget item, just try to squirrel away and build it in, is what you're saying essentially.
Even if you sell it all in to your point, you're gonna have, you know, the cost.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's probably our long-term plan. And whether it's Jefferson or these facilities or where that goes, we just need to start kind of budgeting it using the Fund Forty-six.
So, how does it look the other way with, on the other side of the capital, with the other, I mean, where are we looking like there for personnel?
Yeah, so, and you kind of pointed to the increased budget last year, like, for this, to save some jobs. It really did, because we ended up planning for that, and so, that operation was taken. So, we think we're pretty solid, in fact, we had a discussion many times about just having the mindset that we're gonna live within our means of the state budget, that's our relative. And we've gone a couple of times unsuccessfully to the public and we think with the per pupil increases, we're good for a number of years. Hopefully, that will continue. And unless there's big budget swings or we get years of freezes stuck together, then maybe we have a conversation about operations referendum someday in the future. But our goal, my goal, although Kelly's leading, my goal is to improve within our means. So, we'll see how we do that.
And next year's the second year in that state, so we got that thousand dollar increase on the low revenue ceiling. We got three twenty-five the first year and then another three twenty-five the next year. So, kind of think about costs going up, but we're gonna get a little additional revenue. I do think we'll be kind of okay, but to that point, sometimes those things that are, that we do want or whatever, we need to weigh out, maybe also consider that line item to continue to put money into Fund Forty-six.
We've been able to rebuild the, we as a group have been able to rebuild the maintenance budget.
Yep.
Which is very helpful for roofs and asphalt and that kind of stuff where it was down quite a bit two years ago. And so, we're okay as far as like maintaining what we've got, but we can't carry an empty building or carry old buildings at the same, you know. So, that's the point we're at.
Or a large stake item.
Yeah.
Kelly, I have a question, it's very interesting. The logistics of moving to Fund Forty-six, does that have to come from like a recommendation from, I know there's, sorry, I know there's a lot of funds, so bear with me. There's one that we can only put a certain percentage into and move it to, is that the Fund Ten to the Fund Forty-six? Is that what this is?
Yeah, you can transfer from Ten to Forty-six, you know, till July third, yeah. Actually, to make that decision on the previous year, we booked it on.
So, we'd have to have a surplus in Fund Ten to do that?
Yep, if we have, like, yep, if we do that. But you can actually budget, so that's like, some years you don't budget for anything, but if there's extra, you can move it into there or you could budget and do extra, that was kind of my point, which is.
And there's not a max percentage, like, there's a number of like thirteen, I don't know, some weird percentage?
We have a board policy. It's a fund.
Oh, okay, thank you, so that's what I was trying, okay, thank you.
Fund, yeah, the Fund Balance Policy previously said to maintain our fund balance at fourteen percent. We changed that now so that it's, we have it up to about twenty-one percent, which I think is, we're saving on short-term borrowing and entering costs up like that, we're in a much better, twenty to twenty-five percent is the minimum to avoid short-term borrowing. We're still short-term borrowing.
Okay, so, in order for us to put stuff into Fund Forty-six, and we can budget for it, whomever at the time of the meeting would like me to recommend that to us, like, or do we ask for that to happen? I guess I'm just wondering, like, how can we do that?
Yeah, I usually, like, I bring it and, like, it's ultimately my decision. Yep, I made the choice, but I brought it like last summer or two and just say, this is where I think we're at and this will be the transfer and they give me the authority.
And the new person that will be coming in, that would be like a direction that we would probably look, okay.
So, Kelly, I think I understand your question. Next year at the annual meeting, can we build a budget that has a Fund Forty-six line in it with a dollar?
Yeah, and you do this here too. I put some in there too, just to bound, like, because we have, yeah, I put some in. Knowing though, right, like, if you go over costs of other things, that's one of the, you know, the transfer. And I shared a lot every month with Finance, we talked about it. Our salary fringe is running under budget.
Okay.
Mainly because we've not been able to fill the commissions that we already wanted to fill. And some costs less, but a lot of times we can't kind of subdate it, so we're not paying them either. So, but there's gonna be some extra this year, yep, and that will move it into, yep. But you can even budget a line, and that's my point, because some of these projects might be a five million dollar project that you can't come up with in one year.
So, how would you, okay, so, and I know this is your magic number thing, sorry, I apologize to all of us. I just wanna understand how, so if you have a line item and you're budgeting for it, you're just saying like, we know that every year we're gonna need five million, we'll just, whatever, for this line item? And we add that to our normal everyday expense then, that we have, like, our annual expense, we do an annual budget?
When you do an annual budget, that is literally a line item that I put a dollar on. Yep, and at the end of the year, they're like, like, I have this lesson on the board, they all got this lesson in the family.
Do I need, is this where I need to be looking at?
They're laughing because they have this lesson. I call it a faked boss business meeting, but that literally is.
It's over there.
That's the end of the board.
Get comfortable.
I'm sorry, I didn't wanna leave you guys, that's what it comes down to.
No, and this is what happens, and I gave them the idea of like, I gave you a balanced budget every year. So, at the end of twenty-two, twenty-three, we had a balanced budget. And a balanced budget is revenue equals expenses, I know that on there too. This was it. Our actual revenue at the end of the year was this and our actual expenses at the end of the year was that. I had to make a decision by July third, so five hundred thousand, I made a transfer to Fund Forty-six for five hundred thousand and fourteen thousand went into Fund Balance. I was kind of proud. Yeah, fourteen thousand is pretty darn close on a thirty million dollar, because there's a lot of spending that happens in July that we have to go back to.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and then, like, I gave an example of twenty-one, remember when I walked in, I said, there's no way. I think the first meeting I met all of you, I said, I can't make a transfer, I don't know where we're at, we had so much. Not close on year-end. This was our budget, this was our actual revenue, so revenue was much higher than budget. Expenses are below at about two point two million dollars, goes into Fund Balance. So, that's kind of, that's what that means. And then, so, I always, I told them too, I said, this is revenue equals expenses, that's the balance budget. And then, the difference automatically goes into Fund Balance unless I literally, this is a separate bank account, I move it over here. When we spend it and I move it over here, that is part of shared costs with aid. So, up here is our revenue limit, okay, which is gonna be your aid and your levy. On that side is the aid. And so, it's interesting, and I just showed them that, like, you can kind of see twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, that's when you still had a ref and random. So, do you see the total revenue is twenty-eight point five, twenty-nine point one, now you see your aid. Then you see the referendum and your debt fell off. So, do you see that twenty-nine point one dropped to twenty-five point eight? Then twenty-three, twenty-four, we got that thousand, three twenty-five, it went back up. But look, our aid went down because aid always trails by a year in what you spent. We spent less than twenty-two, twenty-three, so they gave us less aid, that's why all the taxpayers were coming. That's why taxes went up. Now, we'll spend more this year, so a strategy I recommend to you, I'm gonna, my goal is to do something like this. I don't wanna dip into your Fund Balance, because I think it's kind of like, you wanna keep it there. But I'll get it as close as you can and I'll recommend, hopefully, Mark will. Move to Fund Forty-six and then your aid's gonna go up because he's spent more. So, hopefully, that, that was my little lesson.
I mean, I'm glad you were able to use it again.
So, that's kind of the goal, if that makes sense. So, my, like, but when we built this budget, I guess my point is, whatever your budget is, we might wanna line item to put into Fund Forty-six. Plus any underspent. Plus any underspending goes out to there.
So, yeah, okay, okay.
Now, the tricky part is if we dedicate a million in our budget to Fund Forty-Six, that's coming from somewhere.
Right.
Correct.
So that's the trick.
I mean, yeah, I didn't really need five million, but I guess, I, yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, you're entertaining me with that.
Another clarifying.
What's that?
Your next job would be a teacher.
Okay.
So another clarifying point, you mentioned this in finance, HR before, if you actually wanted to break down Fund Forty-Six to Point or somewhere made earlier, you could say J Stadium, X number of dollars, boiler at MHS. If you wanted a separate, we could call it a count code or, or something, or for roofs or paving or whatever. If you wanted to really get down to that level versus just Fund Forty-Six, that way if there was a reminder for certain items that we could have that in there. But that's a different day, different time, just a reminder that we could get down to that level. Anyone else have any additional run?
Facility's committee may be coming out the first part of May. Can we just get some real, real, real preliminary numbers?
So we can get some all-in, work on a few different.
Next item you're working on?
So, I mean, I think, again, I don't wanna believe this point, but the referendum project that we pitched was, um, to do it right. So we would be doing it at a much lesser approach in order to do it. It's a matter of taking facilities, updated facilities, expensive facilities offline, maybe that's still the approach.
Anyone else? Yeah, Shannon. All right. Sounds like we have some work cut out for us. Fortunately, we have newly found a magician on our, our team now, so. Appreciate all the expertise there, forward hearing, hearing from the facilities committee. We have nothing else on that, we'll move down to, uh, the next agenda item is the personnel report. Hiring, recruitment, resignations, retirements, uh, put together by Dr. Strike and her team. There is a recommended motion, if anyone's willing to make a motion on that agenda item. Paul?
I move to approve the attached personnel report contingent upon a release of contract for hiring and finding satisfaction appropriate for calculated damages for resignation status back.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second? Second by Jaclyn. Any discussion or questions on that motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on that motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is in fact the consent agenda. I'll ask at this time if any board member would like anything pulled from the consent agenda to be dealt with on its own. Anyone looking to have any items pulled from consent agenda to be handled individually? Hearing none, I would ask if anyone on the board is willing to make a motion in regards to the consent agenda? Ron? Otherwise, I'd like Kendra to do that one more time.
This is my initiation, right? No. Uh, motion to approve consent agenda items A through D, which includes minutes of March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, and April tenth, twenty twenty-four meetings. The second reading and approval of policy sixty-six eleven. Districts, supported, sponsored, student activity counts, claims, vouchers, and receipts totaling three million, three hundred, seven thousand, one hundred, eighty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents, and donations totaling two thousand, six hundred, fifteen dollars.
Motion by Kendra, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Could she repeat that first?
Yeah, well, no. Thanks for that. The rest of us heard that. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
I'll stay from the April tenth meeting events.
Thank you, Brett. Chad?
I'm staying for a portion of the March twenty-seventh.
All right, thank you. Motion carries with the noted abstentions. Items for future meetings, this time, board members have the opportunity to highlight or share any items that they feel should be brought to committee or to future board meetings as a whole. I ask at this time, other than the things we just recommended to be brought to committee or here. Board members have any ideas, share them now. If there's anything in addition that we've chatted about, I think most of the things on there are things we just talked about again tonight. See if there, where are we going, the referendum, us, Jefferson, Pine River discussions, and we'll hear more about that at facilities and then, and the upcoming board meetings.
I do have an update on the tunnel, Chad, you had to ask a little on the past. So I talked to Chris on, they are working on getting it out at the market and Athletic Park. They're waiting on some technology, something. It's in the queue.
Sound good, I was just gonna ask.
Any additional items, board members would like to clarify that they're on upcoming meetings? If you think of any, call or email, that would be great, let us know. Moving on, tomorrow morning is radio program. Shannon and I will highlight, uh, tonight's board meeting at eight fifteen approximately in the morning at, uh, Blue Jay seven thirty radio station, ninety-six three. Lani will be around to keep us on track. Future meetings, we have coming up, special board meeting next Monday, April twenty-second, five thirty in the boardroom, which is our organizational meeting. Bridges Virtual Academy will be busy in the next few weeks. They have a governance board meeting on Thursday, April twenty-fifth, twelve forty-five PM virtually. Safety committee meeting is on Monday, April twenty-eighth, twelve thirty PM here in the boardroom. Facilities committee is Wednesday, May first, three thirty PM in the boardroom. Bridges Virtual Academy governance meeting after that is on Tuesday, May seventh, twelve forty-five PM virtually. Then on Wednesday, May eighth, uh, four thirty PM, our curriculum technology pupil services committee next week's immediately followed. But no sooner than five PM will be the finance human resources committee, as stated, it was Wednesday, May. Head Start Policy Council meets Tuesday, May fourteenth, five thirty PM, out of Pine River School for Young Learners. The next regularly scheduled board meeting is Wednesday, May fifteenth, five thirty PM here in the boardroom. Next on our agenda was an opportunity, if needed, to go into executive closed session in regards to parental requests for student opt-out for state assessments. At this time, there were no, uh, student opt-out requests, um, received between the day of posting and today's meeting. So we will not ask for that motion. This time I will ask if any board member is willing to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Motion by Chad, do we have a second? Second by Nubs. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn at six forty-eight PM? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. No abstentions. Meeting is adjourned, thank you all for your attendance.